A hereby call to order, the regular meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission of July 16th. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call would let the clerk show that six of the seven commissioners are present. Luke Schlosser is not present at this time. Minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on June 18th, and a correction has been submitted to the clerk already on one of the votes. I have a motion from the vice chair.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ayes have it, six zero. Okay, if anybody would like to speak before the commission on any non-agenda items, would you please fill out a card? And now is your opportunity. Anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Any, any, any? No ex parte communications. All right. The consent agenda. We have one case. It is case 083500001, a wireless communication facility special use permit. The applicant is AT&amp;T Wireless, and the staff is recommending that the public hearing for this case be continued to August 20th, the next Planning Commission meeting. That is the only piece of business. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Commissioner.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six zero. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business is case 0720000029, Australia, Region 3, preliminary planned area development, a public hearing. The applicant is new in communities, and the commission has received a communication requesting a continuance of this item until the September 17th meeting of the Planning Commission. Can I get a motion to continue this case, or continue this case to the September 17th meeting?
Tom Lou, Commissioner.
I have a motion from the vice chair and a s-
You have a question?
Let me get, let me get the motion on the floor, please. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Loretano. Okay, now, discussion. Manager, Coons, Bob Coons, would you please?
Mr. Commissioner Williams, the applicant and the staff are endeavoring to work out the specific language to some of the stipulations that were included in the staff's report. And it becomes highly technical or legal in nature, and we're endeavoring to work out those differences prior to the commission or discussions. Those are relatively clean.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask the commission members to hold on to their Australia material until the September Commission meeting? So, take that home with you and keep it in a safe place.
Arms, you're getting tired carrying this back and forth.
I've been ca- I know. What can I say? All right. I think we have, we have the motion on the floor. Can I get a vote on that?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Thank you. All right, six zero. Next order of business is case 083000004, Walgreens drive-through pharmacy special use permit. And the, Bob Coons is gonna be the presenter on staff, and I'm gonna open the public hearing on this matter.
Chairman, members of the commission, this use permit application is for convenience use, a drive-through pharmacy to facilitate the development of a Walgreens drugstore. The drugstore will be constructed on Pad 3 within the Mountain Ranch Marketplace at Australia Commercial Center, which is at the northwest corner of Australia Parkway and Elliott Road. The Australia PAD zoning designation for the property is general commercial. The site is bound to the northwest and, and east by undeveloped properties, zone for commercial and/or office uses, and to the south is the Star Point Residence Club. This is a site plan for the Mountain Ranch Marketplace at Australia Commercial Center. This was approved administratively by city on April 4th of this year. This 22-acre development will be the first major commercial center in Australia, as you know. As you know. Phase 1 of the commercial center will consist of the grocery store, excuse me, lost my train of thought, a 50,000 square foot gro- major grocer, a smaller 10,000 square foot tenant, retail shops connecting and adjoining the grocery store, the Walgreens pharmacy, and shops at the corner of Elliott Road and San Gabriel. The remaining development that's not shown in yellow here is in phase 2 of the development. Again, the Walgreens is on Pad 3, up in the corner of the shopping center. The Walgreens drugstore and pharmacy will contain 14,820 square feet of interior floor area. The drive-through pharmacy will consist of a single lane, drive-through with a pickup window on the northeast side of the building. Stacking space for approximately six vehicles is provided before the pickup window, and egress, exiting from the drive-through is to the northwest into the center and out to this common drive. This common major drive on the northeast side of that will be some future office development. The proposed drugstore will be required to use the architectural style, building materials, and color as approved for the mark, for the Ranch Marketplace at Australia Center, and it's depicted on the screen, and, and this is the exact architecture of the center. The conceptual development plans, site plans, and architecture provide for adequate traffic accidents, access, queuing to the drive-through and pedestrian circulation for the drive-through pharmacy, and the planned orientation and location of the drive-through lane is consistent with the city's design guidelines. This request for use permit for convenience use for the drive-through pharmacy meets the conditions and required findings for use permit and satisfies the criteria for convenience uses as defined in the zoning ordinance. Currently, staff is recommending approval of the use permit, subject to the three stipulations. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant's representative is here and is also available.
Questions of the applicant, Commissioner Lacks? I mean, questions of staff?
Bob, on this, for the site plan here, where we're showing, it says, I don't know, about upper third of the page, one-way exit-only drive. So that appears not to be an ingress but an egress, right, in the sort of the front after you exit off of El- or you enter off of Australia Parkway. So I'm curious as to how one actually gets to the drive-through, if that's the case, or do you mean it's a one-way entrance and then they would go, or do they have to go all the way around the building in order to go through the drive-through, if that makes sense?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lacks, you're referring to here where it shows one-way.
Yes.
This is a one-way drive from here going north, northwest. In order to access that, if you come in this way, you can make this movement. If you're coming in otherwise, you have to go around and come into this direction.
Right. The only reason I say that is because that, that point right there is labeled as a one-way exit-only.
Good kids, absolutely.
I think it's-
It should say one-way entrance.
Entrance.
It's labeled incorrectly.
See, right.
My apologies, I'm talking about two different things.
Oh, okay.
The drive that's in the front of the Walgreens coming out to this major drive will be a one-way drive in this direction. As I recall, through the development review process with traffic engineering, engineering departments, there is a great concern for making this movement, coming from this drive and immediately going into the, to the drive-through, where this was agreed upon that this would be a one-way, one-way drive exiting onto this major drive only, and no entrance coming in from the main drive. So you would circle throughout in this development and come around. And that was being because of the closeness of this driveway with this intersection, which is gonna be, I believe, lighted as a centralized intersection. So there was concern about cars stacking at the light going onto Australia with cars potentially coming off of Australia and trying to turn left into that internal driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions of staff? Mr. Loretano?
No.
Okay. Are we gonna put some signs up on that major drive saying where the entrance is? Because people are gonna turn, people are gonna come in, coming up Australia Parkway and up, what is that, San Gabriel? Oh, no, Australia Parkway, and gonna make a right into this intersection and wonder why they can't get into Walgreens. And, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna say it's an exit-only, then we need to put some kind of signage on the, you know, as soon as you make that right turn that says, okay, the entrance is, you know, 300 feet ahead, or whatever, because otherwise we're gonna have problems.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have not taken this Walgreens drive-through through the full site plan review process, and we will certainly identify that as, as appropriate signage for the drive-through to be incorporated into the design review.
I mean, if-
You can stipulate that also to this use permit if you desire.
If, if, when traffic engineer signs off on it, sure they'll hear our comments, or you'll bring our comments up, and, but the applicant has raised his hand, so if nobody else has any staff questions, let's get the applicant up here. Come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Richard Starr with Evergreen. My address? 2390 East Camelback, Phoenix, 85016.
Do you wanna make a presentation, or do you just want to answer questions, or do you have any problems with, you know, with signage on the roadway that Commissioner Lacks pointed out?
Yeah, this signage would be a, is a suitable stipulation, and that'd be no, no issues.
Okay.
I'm a, Bob did an excellent job. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, questions of the applicant? Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this case? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for any commission discussion. I, I just wanna follow up. Do you want a commission, do you want a stipulation about signage, or will you just take it under advisement that this was the comments of the commission, or the sense of the commission that we need to clear that up? I don't, I don't think we need a formal stipulation.
We don't need a formal stipulation if you're fine with the staff incorporating that in the review.
Okay. Any, any other comments from anybody on the commission? Commissioner Williams, I can see, I know you wanna have a comment. Go for it.
No, I, I just have a question of our Australia mountain resident. Do we have any concerns with this?
She's happy to see it happening.
I am very happy. Sometimes the one that seems to always have a problem, I assume you're talking to me. I'm, I'm very happy to see Walgreens up there. It is long overdue. There is no way to get medicine, and I look at hours, 10:00 PM daily. I'm glad it's not a 24-hour, because there is one just not too far away, but I think that will serve the residents well, so I have no problems with that, especially when you add the signage on the traffic flow. I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm delighted.
See, I knew that. Any other, any other comments from the commission? All right, can I get a motion, please, to approve this case?
We approve case number 08300-00004.
A second.
Use permit to allow a convenience use for Walgreens and Australia Mountain Ranch.
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, a second from Commissioner William.
Miller.
Miller, excuse me, sorry.
That's okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, six zero. Thank you. All right, next item of business is case 066000007, the Australia Falls Regional Shopping Center Site Plan Amendment, and I am going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Coretia is going to give us the presentation. Take it away, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. I'll need the overhead viewer. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, commission members, this is a site plan amendment for the Australia Falls Regional Center. That center is located on 106 acres here, located at the northwest corner of Bullard and McDowell Road. The site plan was reviewed and approved by the commission back in September 2007, and approved by the council back in October 2007. With this approved site plan, we had almost a million square feet of building area proposed. Was an open-air design with the buildings configured along this main street here. Tonight's amendment is to look at a few changes that are proposed with this regional center. Changes are outlined in the staff report, but just to go over them real quickly. We have Macy's moving down. There was a drive in between here. That moved down to the south to attach to the shops here. To maintain east-west vehicular circulation, a lane here was added where that was predominantly just pedestrian plaza area. So now we have vehicle traffic going east-west through here. With that new lane added in, we moved from purely pedestrian orientation to something now that'll look more like a main street. Angled parking, enhanced landscaping, street furniture, that type of main street-type atmosphere that will be continued from this main street here. With now the vehicular circulation here and the main pedestrian areas, those areas were now distributed throughout the center. So now we have a main park here at the entrance to the main street, and also a large park And both of those areas will have the amenities that were approved with the previous site Children's areas, street furniture, amphitheaters, programming of such events as the Santa Village, farmer's markets, things like that will be able to occur in that South Park area, and to some degree in the Central Park. We also have a change here. This parcel to the west will be designated for future retail. Right now, we're looking at a 50,000 square foot footprint, probably, and what Westcor has said that will be maintained, so we won't have really any issues with parking in the future. The center had ample supply of parking. When that parcel develops, it won't affect the parking calculations for the center. And finally, minor change, we had a food court designated there in Building 14. It was gonna be a typical food court. Now, we're going to be looking at food tenants there, but also other food tenants distributed throughout the mall itself. After our review, Mr. Chairman, staff finds that this amendment is consistent with the design theme, development concepts that were initially approved by the commission and council. The open-air concept, the pedestrian orientation, that all remains with this amended site plan. We are recommending approval with the two stipulations attached with the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part of the presentation. The applicant is available for questions, and they also have a short presentation if you'd like to see it.
Okay. Let's welcome questions of staff before we allow the applicant to come up and give us the presentation. All right, Steve, thank you. Please identify yourself for the record.
Christine McRide with Westcor, 11411 North Tatum Boulevard, Phoenix, 85028. Margie Aaron with Westcor, 11411 North Tatum Boulevard, Phoenix, 85025. 28, 18, sorry, it's closed. We have a brief presentation that applies visuals to the presentation that Steve just made. I think he very well summarized exactly what we're asking for, which is primarily, primarily changes in two areas. Pulling Macy's into the mall, and they've done this in many of their newer developments, a very important feature for them, and we will show you how circulation changes as a result of that. And then, secondly, adding more green areas throughout the mall in order to replace our intended plaza areas, which we are replacing with vehicular traffic. And so if we go ahead to the PowerPoint, I can roll you through that quickly. How do I go forward? It's not advancing.
Can you run it for us?
The PowerPoint isn't, it's not advancing.
There we go.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, this just shows you the amended site plan that Steve had just shown. Again, two primary changes, pulling Macy's into the plaza. Actually, it's shown running north-south, it actually runs east-west. So the site plan, as you see it up on the screen, north is to the right. Another, another change that we've made, and we'll go through these one at a time, is a park in the central area of the site plan, and then another park, which is more significant in size, on the southern portion of the site plan. Okay. Working first on the Macy's Court, very important to our major department store tenant that they pull into our tenant lineup. Two primary designs that we tend to work with with our major department stores, you'll see one with Stiller's and another with Macy's. One is creating a throat that is activated with tenants, the other is pulling the large department store tenant into the activation of the overall boulevard. Showing you a conceptual, and again, this is conceptual, this is not a reflection of our building, this is just simply showing you placement of Macy's and the tenants that would be side-by-side. In addition, it shows you the vehicular traffic that moves both north-south and east-west, creating an intersection in front of Macy's Court. In addition, as you can't see on this conceptual, we have, we will have a drop-off area for convenience of Macy's customers. And then I'd like to show you a photograph of actual Macy's built at Otay Ranch in the San Diego metropolitan area about two years ago. This, this setup works well for them in terms of how they fit in with adjacent tenants within the site plan. In addition, you can see that the court is landscaped with landscaping in terms of trees that frames it, and low-lying bushes and flower plants in front of the front door. We would add, most likely seating in this area as a respite for our customers. And then, secondly, it was very important to us that the plaza that we replaced with vehicular traffic maintained a very green image. It's important to us that our customer is looking around the corner, and so we are working very hard to make sure that our main boulevard, which runs north-south, is different from our east-west boulevard, which is Palm Lane, as depicted on the screen. Okay, the second place in which our site plan has been amended, and very slightly so, is pushing back Building 8 in order to allow a small respite area, which for now we call Central Park. The intention of this area is that we design it as a great room on grass, so it would be an area in which our shoppers come to rest, come to enjoy the beauty of the area. Seating will be provided extensively, shade will be provided to some degree, and in addition, it will be lushly landscaped and have other features such as water. The second area in which we've amended on our site plan is an area called our South Park. This area will be more active as a park. This area will be a center for programming for all seasons of the year, primarily our Christmas programming with a Santa and a Christmas tree, farmer's markets throughout the year, sporadic events that would be more entertainment and nature. In addition, the challenge in this area, and one that we welcome, is that we make it active throughout the day. So it's very important to us that we amenitize it as an area in which shoppers want to visit. And we will do so with pop jets, we will do so with, with comfortable landscaping and seating throughout the park. This gives you some conceptual perceptives of the direction that we're going with this park. As you can see, it's framed by trees, very grassy and green, offering amenities for, for different times of the day, for different, different types of uses. And then, I think most importantly is to show you some of our inspiration for this park, which we have found at the many centers that we've visited over the last year. Having a focal point is very important to a lifestyle center, and as such, the addition of this park is very important to our plan. So as you can see, Easton Town Center in Columbus, Ohio, completely surrounded by retail, very active, very much an important part of the development. Showing Easton Town Center with Brio Tuscan Grill spilling out onto the park. Again, Easton Town Center from another angle, showing benches surrounding the park. And then Americana in the Los Angeles area, again, a very active park in the center of retail. Americana from the children's perspective, benches and play areas. And last but not least, development of our own Kirland in Scottsdale, showing a focal point that is clearly the entertainment center of this plaza. And then, any questions that we can answer, we'd be happy to do so.
Questions of the applicant? Questions, questions, questions. Commissioner Williams.
This Palm Lane, there's still, will be adequate pedestrian travel room up and down that area.
Absolutely. Margie, would you address that?
Yes, absolutely. The street is designed right now at a zero grade so that the pedestrian could actually go from a storefront to the storefront, ease what they, row of Palm Lanes planted in the center of the drive, and will have shade structures covering both sides of the buildings, and full of amenities such as pots and benches and, you know, seating for the shopper's comfort.
Thank you. I like what you did, especially moving the restaurant areas around. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a couple. When you originally presented this, part of the, you talked about a large food court, and then I think we, some of us went down and toured Santan Village, which just opened up recently, and they have a large food court right outside of the movie theater. Are you deviating from the food court concept so that there'll be, so there will not be a food court and there'll just be individual restaurants all around the mall? Is that, is that the new plan?
That's correct. I think probably differentiating is the word that we choose to use. It's important to us in building these developments that we maintain interest every stretch of the way. Restaurants are key to a lifetime, lifestyle center. One of the things that I've learned in developing lifestyle centers is people come there to eat and then shop, whereas in indoor center, they come to shop and then they eat, just as they happen to be there. And so in following that, the traditional food court model needs to evolve, and this is an evolution of it. And so it's our goal to place restaurants where the shoppers will be. So understanding who our tenants are in a specific area and providing the restaurant that, that shopper would want is key to our site plan. So yes, we're differentiating from Santan.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is there will not be any food courts, or will not, there'll not be any clumping of, you know, Panda, Potato 123, and Sabat- you know, Sabaro's?
It's early to tell, because our tenants will determine where they locate, but our best guess at this point is that they will cluster. So they will be in groups of two or three, where it may- So they will be in groups of two or three, where it makes sense that the customer would like a choice. And you see that often with sit-down restaurants as well as fast-food restaurants. And so they cluster, so there are options. And, and really, that was the intention of the original food court years ago, is that you gave the shopper options so that everybody could be happy at the same time.
Okay, next question. You know, now that Macy's has signed a board and Macy's has basically implemented a radical change or a change in the, in the original plan, where are we gonna see something from Dillard's? Or Dillard's wants to be a freestanding, you know, department store in this, in the center? And they're happy with their position, you know, where, where are they on this?
Dillard's is happy with the site plan as it sits. There are different ways to place yourself as a department store. And certainly, their locations are different. Dillard's is very happy with their location as it aligns along Bullard. And so they're happy with the site plan as it sits.
Okay. Central Park, you talked about some limited shade. I would, I would, I would caution you about limited shade, especially, there are still people who are not happy that this is an outdoor mall. And the more shade you provide, the better off you're gonna be, especially now when we're looking for customers.
Can I may address the shade issue? In this area, landscaping is very important. So the shade will occur such that the landscaping thrives, but the people shopping are comfortable. As the building is eastern-facing, the building actually, by sheer direction of its height, will provide shade to the shopper there.
Is that, is that one of the two-story buildings?
It's one of the taller buildings. And in addition, we will, it's not a two-story, however. In addition, we are working on a significantly large shade structure that will elevate above the building at about 45 feet.
Okay. South Park, I, you know, I know we're in conceptual areas, but I assume there'll be some kind of water feature?
Absolutely.
Okay.
At least one.
At least. Significant one. And then, last but not least, I was reading something about the future retail, basically Building 2 that's moving to the west. If you were to expand that, you would have to build a parking structure. Is that the way I understand it? Or maybe staff could clear that up for me? Is that what I read? Okay, so, so if it, so if it develops at the 50,000-square-feet level, surface parking will be fine if it develop, if, if need shows it to be developed higher, then, then a parking structure would be required? Is that the way?
Chairman, by our calculations, we can add approximately 180,000 square feet and still be within the restrictions of the city's parking requirements. And we can work the math out with Steve and make sure of it. I think we're significantly overparked for a reason. It's very important for our customer to have convenience.
Okay. I think there was a question, since you're here, about two hotels that are coming. And would you be able to show us where they are in the site plan or?
They don't exist on the site plan that we showed this evening. They exist within the larger master plan of Australia Falls.
Got it.
To the, to the west of Bullard Wash.
Got, okay. So they're south of the market?
That's, they're east of the market.
Eastern, okay. Any other questions of the applicant? All right. I'm sorry, what? Does anybody from the public like to speak? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, commission discussion. Anything other than we like it? And good, good speed to you. Commissioner Lacks, I didn't see you like it. Am I putting words in your mouth?
No, I, I will say that some of the elements I, I'm fine with. But I just, I, I can't get over putting Palm Lane right there. I wish that that remained a pedestrian-only, and maybe they're having a little turnaround. If I wanted to drop shoppers off right there in front of Macy's, I would be, you know, better with that. But I just don't like the idea of, you know, adding all of that traffic into the, you know, department stores and where all the, a lot of the major shopping will be. I would rather keep that more pedestrian-friendly, but, but the other elements I'm fine with.
Do you, could you come up for a question? I have a question. The movie theater, traffic patterns in malls evolve, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that the movie theater traffic is not gonna be coming up the main drag and then making a left on Palm Lane?
Right. Our perception is, and this is by observations primarily at Kirland, where there is a main street.
Right.
Traffic comes up the main street to enjoy the scenery for a while. But if you're going anywhere, you figure out the most efficient way to get there, which is why we've preserved the Loop Road, which works very efficiently. In addition, if you take a look at the site plan, you'll notice a significant parking field to the north of Harkins. Very, very important, because not only do we need to provide parking that's sufficient for Harkins, but we need not to impede the parking for our other tenants. So it's very important for us to plan appropriately there.
Does that address your concern or?
No.
No, okay.
Can I, may I address your concern?
Yeah, please.
It's something that we have, we have thought about. And so, so really, that was part of our inspiration for the design of Palm Lane, making sure that it had pedestrian feel, although vehicular traffic moved through it. By closing up the vehicular traffic in front of Macy's according to the original site plan, we closed down a primary east-west corridor in terms of moving traffic through and around. That was a huge concern. And so making sure that the pedestrian feel existed at Palm Lane allows us to convert it. So if we see that it's moving nonetheless, then there's a possibility to convert in the future. And then, secondly, convert temporarily. And so creating an area for programming where we could close down the street temporarily and make that into, you know, a traditional pedestrian mall.
But initial, but you're gonna develop it with traffic-calming elements into that Palm Lane itself?
Absolutely. We'll do that, we'll do that through the pavement. Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions? Can I get a motion?
I believe that we approve case number 07600007.
I have a motion from Commissioner Laura Tano.
Second.
And I have a second from the vice chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes, the ayes have it five to one. And Commissioner Lacks, could you, for the record, tell the, your nay vote?
Yeah, I just, I disagree with putting, you know, any sort of vehicular traffic right there. I, I just, based on, you know, just the configuration of the building, you still have to go around either Dillard's or Harkins and make turns. So I don't see that as a significant corridor. I don't like the idea of having traffic in there.
Okay. That is our business. Staff communications.
The rural development standards, we finalized those and we're planning to take those to City Council on August 25th for their review.
Will that, will that be an initial hearing? Or is that gonna be, I mean, they have to go through two hearings before, I mean, is that gonna be in a, in a work session? Or is that gonna be a hearing at council and they're gonna vote on it?
Well, if you call, it's, it's a, it's a whole package of recommendations that would require ordinance changes.
Right.
And, and that'll have to go back to the planning commission, see council, through public hearing process.
Okay.
So they're just buying off on the recommendations to-